Good, welcome to Mike. Right to your left is the vice chair, Mr. Carvajal. Again, Mr. Frankel, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Rydel. Uh, head of inspectional services, Mr. Duke, our court, Ms. Murphy. If you have a cell phone or pager, could you please put on silent or vibrate? If anyone's gonna testify tonight, could you please stand up and take a note? Anyone's gonna testify, if you think you might testify, please stand up and take a note. Thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth, to help truth, not to belittle truth, to help you God?
You have a motion to waive the minutes of April 26th. If we're here, do I make a motion to waive the three hundred minutes of April 26th meeting? Second it?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. On our old business, case number sixteen thirteen, we have a letter here, fast in development, one fifty, one fifty-four point B R. We wanna continue this to July twelfth. They haven't gone in front of planning board yet, so we want them to go there. You have a motion, please.
This is the chairman, man, number sixteen dash zero one three, Back to Development LLC, Lawrence and Danny member, for a variance to construct a seventeen year three-story residential development on the premises number one fifty, one fifty-four point B R. Make motion to, uh, put in the hearing to July.
Second it?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Is there anyone here for that case? That won't be heard July twelfth. Next on our business, case number sixteen oh one five, Michael Sawie for variance finding to demolish existing two-story residence, constructing two-and-a-half-story single-family residence on the premises thirty Sunrise Council. Have you set up plans yet?
Yeah, we have, Rob Fleming, Fleming and Fleming, I represent the applicant here. This was a continued matter from April twelfth, I believe.
Yes.
There were some concerns by the, by the board, as well as some neighbors in the area. Again, this is a, an application for the raising of a single-family residence and constructing a new, uh, two-and-a-half-story residence, uh, centered on the lot. Concerns back in April twelfth were, one, the height of the building. Uh, my client has addressed that through his architect, they have come down a couple feet on the height. There was a concern by, I think the board, but neighbors as well, there was a wraparound, there's a wraparound porch, uh, which extended out ten feet, uh, Michael did bring that in five feet. So we're looking at, uh, you're permitted, uh, with this particular lot, to non-conforming lot, to have twenty-two feet total of side setbacks. Uh, and with the exception of the, uh, the bulkhead, uh, Michael almost reached that, we have about a foot and a quarter on, on one side, with that wraparound section as, that's about nine point seven five feet, uh, from that lot line. The other side, again, with the exception of the bulkhead, uh, he's about eleven feet off of that side. Um, so he has addressed that, you know, by, by tailoring that down to five feet. There was proposed in the original plans, a, a single-car garage, um, and I think Chairman Akins, uh, you had, uh, thought we might, we might be able to do a, a two-sided, uh, double garage underneath. Because of the narrowness of the lot and how, we have twenty-eight feet, uh, to incorporate stairs, the architect has told me that it's about twenty-four feet, you know, for that double garage, we just didn't have, just couldn't manage to do it. However, on the original, there was a drive-through from Sunrise to Hawkins and all those, uh, neighbors on Sunrise have objected to that. We removed that, there's no driveway, no, no garage access from Sunrise, only from Hawkins.
Uh, here, here's what I see, and, uh, and I have some letters here right into the record. Went down, looked at the property, looked at your plans, on your second floor, on your, on your balcony, you have a house sticking out five feet, which is the house, which the person beside it, her only window to her ocean view for a hundred years is gonna be taken away. So what I'm gonna ask you, if you can move that house back five feet, give it a setback on the back, move the house back five feet, and we, she gets to enjoy her ocean. Client okay with that?
And I did, I did speak with that particular neighbor too, both at neighborhood meeting, we looked at it, and, uh, there was concern of, of both, um, you know, moving it back, you know, meeting that front setback, unfortunately, this is, uh, the lot fronts two streets, you know, so he's subject to twenty-five foot setback on both, you know, which is real, real hardship. But yeah, if we, if we moved it, we would be, you know, within twenty, within twenty feet. So we request a variance for front setback, right, in that respect.
So, with which way, direction are you moving it towards? Towards Sunrise?
We'll move it towards Sunrise. Uh, I think, I think that particular neighbor lives, uh, Hawkins, uh, right next to ours.
Lives over there.
Yeah.
West.
So I've spoken to Michael regarding that, uh, you know, recently, and, uh, he, he is certainly willing to, to, to make that move.
There's one other thing, on the front of this, on Hawkins, you have the two parking spaces at the end, now you're putting in a new driveway, what are we doing with those other spaces?
That's gonna be probably grass, I would assume, with the existing driveway.
You're gonna take that out?
Yeah.
Be with grass, yeah. All right. Ready to see it on.
Is that the?
Any other questions?
Is that, is that the only place that the buddy neighbor parked? Is that? The buddy neighbor that she parked there? Or the four-yard yard?
Well, she, she has two spaces, and I have two spaces.
And they're, they're combined right now, so.
Yeah, it's like one big eight here, whatever, just take out a half. But it goes to my lot.
Just so you have more grass.
It's all, it's all grass.
To look nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions to the council?
No, no.
If I could, we've already heard from the neighbors, now we have some new letters here. Janet Hickey here?
Oh.
We understand what you've done to your neighbor, you let him come closer to your house, and now he's willing to put that back five feet.
Is that the twenty-six foot setback?
So on the front, you're gonna have somewhere about thirty, probably plus thirty-plus.
What part?
On Hawkins, it's gonna go back thirty feet, this, from the front. Right. So which gives you, the house is going back five feet, I mean, see this, okay? Does that work?
That is, it's a back twenty, is it twenty-five feet or twenty-six? I thought it was twenty-six.
It's twenty-five feet frontage, so he's got two frontages, he needs twenty-five in the front and twenty-five in the back. But what we're gonna do is, we're gonna-
Yeah, I need sixty.
But what we're gonna do is, we're gonna move this back to twenty feet frontage on Sunrise.
Oh.
And give him a variance for that. So you have all, you can look at the ocean, and that backup won't be in your way.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it.
Anything else you wanna add?
No.
Need a couple trees?
Nothing else, thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else that wants to add anything new, that hasn't added anything since the plans have changed?
Can I ask?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Simon, is it eighteen Sunrise?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we all here.
Okay, I'm in eighteen Sunrise.
Nope, there's no microphone there. I'll wake you up.
Assistant, assistant.
I know, but everyone's here, everybody here.
So, we're taking the same house?
Yep.
We're just sliding it back five feet?
Five feet.
So, you maintain the same front that he has now?
No.
Which is twenty-one feet from Sunrise.
Yeah, it's gonna, right, it's, uh, twenty, it's gonna be twenty foot, a couple inches.
Twenty-one.
It's got twenty-five, one, it's gonna be twenty foot, one inch.
Okay.
Twenty foot, one inch.
But it's, it's, it's gonna be on the same foundation, basically, as it is now?
Well, it's mov, it's, it's, it's gonna go, as far as, when that goes back five feet, it's probably gonna be even, it'll be right at the edge of that foundation, probably, the porch. For the second floor, covered porch.
Okay, but it's still-
So we're moving this piece here back to about here, which means this depth, this covered porch will probably be up here, just to the second floor.
Okay, and you keep the same, less than ten?
Yep, everything's, everything's the same.
Okay, so, may I be allowed to still say that I'm not, I am not pleased with a, uh, less than ten-foot side setbacks?
Okay.
Because it does set a precedent.
No, I know, but it's, he does have nine feet and three-quarter inches, meaning he's a quarter of an inch off.
It's worse today.
Huh?
The setbacks worse today.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm talking about, you have an existing-
And then on the other side, the other side, he has eleven and a quarter, eleven feet and a quarter.
You have an existing non-conforming being replaced by a larger non-conforming, and that I still remain not, as a neighbor, not pleased with a less than ten-foot side setback.
I mean, you want the house moved to quarter of an inch? Well, that's, we get, that's what we're talking about, talking about a quarter inch.
What's the deck? Is the deck gone?
There's the deck.
Is the deck gone?
No, the deck's here, but here's what it is, it's nine, nine feet, three quarters of porch, so it's nine feet.
That's on the side, I don't know, probably, right? That's fine.
Nine foot.
Downhill.
Go down.
Put on the back.
Eleven, eleven and a quarter. Eleven feet.
So it's on the Hawkins, right?
Eleven feet, four inches.
I have none.
You got eleven feet, four inches, and, three inches, two inches short of that.
And it's still approximately thirty, forty, five?
Thirty-three, thirty-two and a half? Thirty-two and a half?
Thirty-three. The average is thirty-three and thirty-three.
All right. All right, I see what you're saying. Anyone else have any comments?
My name's Christine Kenny. I live at twenty-one Sunrise Road, I'm up diagonally up the street. My brother is actually out of town, playing vacation, putting a dent. He was here at the last meeting, and he made it, um, perfectly clear he's not opposed to a new home being built. He is opposed to any, um, a house coming any closer than it currently is. After reviewing the new plans and looking at it, um, he has a pretty lengthy letter here. So, I'm just gonna scoot through this. Kenny states that he owns the house at thirty-four Sunrise Road, he is the direct abut to the project. He should stop by saying, "I'm not opposed to my neighbor improving his property or having a bigger house. I expect that the new house would be bigger than the current house. I do have three concerns about this house. One, the side yard setback next to my home. Two, the size of the house. And three, the third four-floor balconies overlooking his house and yard. Both of our houses are non-conforming, are too close to the property line. I am opposed to this new house porch being any closer to my property line. There is no reason for it to be any closer to me than the existing house. I am opposed to the size of the house because I believe that it's too big for an undersized fifty-eight hundred square foot lot. The house is over thirty-one hundred square feet, plus the six open and covered porches that are on every floor of the house. The amount of interior floor area plus outside porches is overwhelming for this lot size. The house has porches and decks on every level. All the porches and decks extend to the edge of the house, closest to my property line. These decks mean that people from the new house can be standing on the second and third floors, staring down into my front and back yards, infringing on my right to privacy in my home. I believe that my neighbor could make a modest reduction in the size of the house by decreasing the width and length by a couple of feet each. This would still result in a large house with plenty of floor area and good-sized rooms. I would also like to see my neighbor reduce the size of third-floor decks to eight feet to retain privacy in my yard." Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, you do know the house went further away from you than it was?
Um, the deck shrunk inside, if I'm not mistaken. I don't watch, no.
No, 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 I'm just saying, but he did move the house away from you, his house. I, I get, I get what you're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Second call? Third call? Anyone else? Step forward.
How you doing? My name is Donald Law, and I live at twenty-one Sunrise Road. I oppose this, the structure of this house, I think the structure of the house is just too big for the lot.
Okay, thank you. This, uh, we have a letter here from, uh, Janet Hickey, which I'll read any, even if she spoke. She's talking about she wants that house moved five feet back. I have another letter from the DPW, which I'll read into the record. April four, two thousand sixteen thirty Sunrise Road, case number sixteen oh one five, review the public progress project, and comments are as follows. Despite how much surface area to be increased during development. Two, provide plan showing existing proposed site conditions, layout of utilities, rating, drainage and construction details. Three, explain how a surface runoff will be discharged and treated, spell surveying the monuments to delineate the public right of way, and the monument shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area for all driveway entrances. Six, provide stormwater connection permit for the, the fountain of public works before construction. Seven, upon completion of the project, as-built plan showing out utilities, building footprints, reference bounds and benchmarks, the financial site facilities, right-of-ways, needs to be submitted along with a digital file, these as-built plans shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor. Anything else, please advise. Uh, call-up, party hearing closed. Counselor, do you have something?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks very much. I was here a couple weeks ago, we talked about one twenty-five George Chester Street. And we were able, you folks were able to figure out a way, um, to, as you heard from the last speaker, about the privacy situation and the size of the house. As, as a, as, as these folks being my constituents, um, certainly we want to, uh, improve the neighborhood, the house absolutely needs to be, uh, you know, taken care of and replaced and, but, um, there is some concern about the size, and then, granted, we're talking about some folks that will look at for five feet, you know, it's, it's something that really needs to be, really, uh, I think that, that right now, if, if, especially in a butter, is, is not happy with what's going on, it's, it's, I mean, taking away privacy that wasn't there. Granted, I know, rules are the rules, but I, I think that needs to be considered in this case. Uh, again, we talked about, uh, two weeks ago, one twenty-five George Chester Street, we need to, folks need to get together and try to figure it out together, and I think, and then we can come to a happy meeting where everybody's happy. And that's what my role here, I feel, as, as white council for, uh, with six, so.
Right, you were the white council when we were here last time, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You had time to meet with constituents and meet with the property?
Uh, I didn't, did not meet with the, like, again, now, I guess I'm on the, on the hot seat, seeing that I brought up here. I didn't, um, I didn't get any correspondences, uh, that I know of from New York.
You mean, you reach out to them, say you want to see them, and meet with them, and follow the plans? I don't know.
Well, when, when I left this, be honest with you, when I left this room?
Yep.
When I left this room, I said, "We all need to get together."
Okay.
Right? Everybody. And guess what? People reached out to me, the other folks, these folks who want, who wanna make the changes, didn't reach out to me, and I offered it out. So, I did, walking out the door here today, yes, I did, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, call-up, party hearing closed. Uh, we have a project here, and, uh, you know, if people see decks as a problem, I mean, you guys spend half a million dollars to build a house, and it's bad, typically Sunrise, you've got this deck, beautiful house in the neighborhood, they think he's done with, you know, you've got a big house here, what is it? You're trying to get to the ocean view, so you're not trying to look at your neighbors, just trying to look at your ocean view. I have decks overlooking my neighbor. I mean, it's just harder trying to get to the ocean. It is what it is, everyone wants to get a piece of the ocean, so, first thing, I'm gonna be voting in favor, I think, the people asked us what we wanted to do as far as moving the house, taking away the street, the other cutout, on a drive-through, move the house back, uh, I think it's a good addition to the neighborhood, so I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think I agree with, I'm always hesitant about the number of porches, but, you know.
It is what is, in a way, I mean.
I mean, and one goes around the corner, goes around the corner, yeah.
Yeah.
It's the first one back, but the second floor deck's kinda like, you know, rock around the end, and it's like, yeah, I'll be voting. You didn't put nothing on this side of the reality, because, right, we're voting in favor.
I think the majority of the house fits with them, it's only four, but I think our only objection is the side yard, the person on the right house is moving away from it. The left, it's, it's pretty, it's a little one-packed, it has a lot more room.
She'd let him move the house five feet that way, to get closer to her, I was thinking that, so they needed to do that.
I think we could sit here forever with objections, and somebody else would come on the objection.
I can, but I understand what they're saying, but isn't everyone trying to get a piece of the water when you're wrapping your deck, look out for water, I don't think, you know, you're spying on people, and, and some of the houses down there are ten feet apart, eight feet apart, five feet on each side, and it's not people looking through windows, they're just trying to get a piece of the ocean. I don't know, it, it, I, I understand, I do.
I'm likely to be voting in favor.
So, Rydel, comments?
Yeah, I mean, every lot in Quinsey is basically non-conforming, uh, there's very few that are conforming. Uh, so anytime anybody builds a bigger house, or, or has to construct a new structure on some of these lots, there's gonna be height, uh, issues that people aren't used to in the neighborhoods, there's gonna be different side setbacks that people aren't used to in the neighborhoods. And I think, uh, the applicant has made a lot of concessions in the whole, I, I can understand the position about the porch for the neighbor, but I, knowing the neighborhood well, I mean, you're on a pretty severe stand, um, and I, I just can't imagine that that third floor is gonna look at anything but his roof, um, you know, just knowing the neighborhood. So, and, and being that, I'm pretty comfortable with all of the rest of it, I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Frankel, comments?
Comfortable with the concessions that were made, if the owner slash developer did what he could do to help out this Hickey on one side, you've got a proverbial whack-a-ball situation, everywhere you move, you're gonna cause a problem with somebody out, whatever direction you're moving the house to. The gentleman on the right, his house is right up against that lot line, which creates the problem with this house moving a little bit closer. I think they've done what they can, uh, never been a big proponent of third-floor decks as being actually in use, and have a paint to get to, so, uh, not really worried about the overhang, I don't think that's gonna become a big issue, and, um, you know, my lawn, but, uh, they're looking out, so I would like to be in favor as well.
Mr. Chairman, man, number fifteen dash zero one five, Michael Sozzi, three, they have a side, demolish existing two-story residence, and can construct a two- or one-story single-family residence on the premises, premises number, very centralized road. I favor motion to grant the variance under adversity conditions and stipulations inside the DPW layer, and that we grant the variance of drainage, but it, on the front.
Frontage.
Frontage. On Sunrise. It should be moving the house back by here, it's, it's, I answer.
Second it?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Further on to tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
Case number sixteen oh one six, desert regime for finding the, for the existing single-family home into a two-family home on the premises fifty-four Union Street, the applicant and the representative here.
I told the architect, I was saying, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take care of that, this was a committee for a meeting, can I have credit?
Uh, he did. Counselor, you got a second? You got a second? The applicant?
Did Mike talk?
Oh, yeah.
Mike, um, the architect for this?
No.
I thought he was new to all you heard at a meeting, and I never, that's why we didn't-
Is the applicant here?
No.
Huh?
In our reality.
Good, let's make a motion. I'll take yours. Motion. Uh, yes. On, uh, case number sixteen oh one six, since the applicant is not here, may I have a motion, please, to deny?
Mr. Chairman, man, number sixteen, yeah, zero one six, veteran Dan, for a finding to convert existing single-family home into a two-family home on the premises number fifty-four Union Street, waiting, I make a motion to deny a variance.
Second it?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so move.
Thank you for your service, good evening.
Thank you, Counselor. Further on to tonight's agenda. On our new business, case number sixteen oh two three. What? Oh, oh. Case number sixteen oh two three, Mike and Sean, a plotter, for variance to construct a side rear addition on the deck, premises number fourteen, Ridgefield Street, is the applicant and the representative here.
Hello.
You have the floor. I'll just wait, you want to?
Yes, uh, my name is Brian Magg, I'm gonna make the contractor representative mark, and Sean, a plotter, to construct a, uh, tear-down, and construct a, uh, two-story building, and add thirty-one by eighteen garage off the side, for the, uh, requirement, and also, I was looking for a variance on the back deck, which is, uh, twelve by eighteen off the back.
We got a tan on, using the same footprint, you know?
Yes, sir, we're using the same, uh-
Is that footprint?
Yes.
It's gonna be the same size, we'll be, same setbacks, everything's the same.
Right.
The only thing they were asking as far as, uh, of side deck?
Side deck.
No, rear deck.
Rear deck.
And that's, how big is that? Twelve by eighteen?
Twelve by eighteen.
And how far you want to get a fence around that?
The rip? Thirteen, six. Right, just letting the space above the garage, it's, uh, it's a new garage.
It's just gonna be an act, so it's, it's, it's like you say, four houses up, the same thing opposite?
Exactly.
Any question, the applicant? If not, right now, we can get back to them. Any questions right now? No.
Must be a lot of stuff growing inside of that, my sort of, um, Mr. Dugger. Yes, Mr. Dugger.
Yes, Mr. Dugger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna go on record, uh, the folks have been in here, Brian's worked very hard on the department to draw some plans at work. This will take a house off our blacklist, been a problem for the building department for years, so, I just wanted to add that.
We have to take all those twenty-foot dikes down.
John.
I know, they have a full stuff.
They said you can help out if you want.
I also want to say, I saw a beautiful car, just hang it out in the mud. Look out, I know where it is.
Any other questions? If we have any, we'll get back to you, okay? You can have a seat right here. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor. First call, you step forward.
Fisher, you have one.
Oh, hello, friends.
Hi, my name's Mike Burns, I live at one fifty-seven Stanish Row, I'm the direct abut behind him, Shoner is my daughter, she's gonna be living here with my granddaughter, and I hope that, uh, squorum residence forever, I'm a squorum resident forever, and I have no opposition to this at all.
Well, we talked about that today, we're looking at a micro fence.
Keep the grandparents away from the grandparents.
I'd like so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? As next door neighbors of the property in fourteen, we have no objection to the new owners. Building within ten feet of the property, I am, we're happy to have them as our new neighbors to finally see the property renovated, uh, an actual neighborhood. Is that the aluminum guy?
Yep.
They even have a junk collector, they grab all the aluminum, so they're laying it all over the place, cleaning it all up, nice, beautiful. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call, third call, call up how the hearing flows. I have a letter here from the DPW, it's dated April twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, fourteen Richfield Street, case number sixteen oh two three. Review the above reference project, our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased through the development. Two, provide plan showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, drainage, drainage and the construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, install survey monuments to delineate the public right of way, the monument shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide dimensions and grades of paving area and all driveway entrances. Six, repair our utility trenches in the public right of way, control with density fill infrared. Seven, apply stormwater connection permit for the apartment of public works before construction. Eight, upon completion of this project, as-built showing all plans, utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, benchmarks, define a total site facilities, right of way needs to be submitted along with a digital file. As-built plans shall be signed by a professional land surveyor. If there are any further questions, please advise. Is there anyone opposed or undecided on this project? First call, second call, third call, call up how the hearing flows. Uh, I just want to look at that, uh, Brian. How big is the driveway? It says twenty-seven nine here. Uh, and that's on the frontage of the road. If it is, why do we need it that big?
No, the, the, the driveway, it's probably from the sidewalk at the most, it might be about, uh, twelve or fourteen feet possibly. Why? Or why you are, why?
This says twenty-seven nine.
I think that's the, from, to the corner.
But it is, and it says driveway, and there's nothing else here. It's the only dimension on the plan here. How big is it? Eighteen?
The garage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you're an eighteen-foot driver?
Yeah.
So, it's eighteen, just front plan on the front, sixteen, eighteen feet, that's just, I don't know, okay, what's the drive? All right. Those are my questions. Any other questions?
No.
Any? Have a motion, please? I'm in favor. Anyone else? Anyone opposed?
No.
Any comments? Have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, uh, case number sixteen, deck zero two three, also short of power for a variance to construct a side and rear addition leaning deck on the premise number fourteen Richfield Street, including, I make a motion to grant the variance of subject to the idols of the DPW.
Second.
Second.
Motion, see you then, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Don't move. Thank you, and thank you for investing in Quincy. You do for home. Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Further under tonight's agenda. Case number sixteen oh two four, part of for variance flood plain to construct two separate second-story additions on a wood deck on the premise number thirty-eight and else. The applicant represents the deck.
Good evening, board members, good evening this morning. For the record, my name is Steve DeRoche, in the Fox Valley Survey, and ninety-five White Street here in the city of Quincy. And also for the record, I'm glad to see you're not stuck in someplace like Minnesota or Iowa or something like that, except tonight, again.
I was not sure if we agreed.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
A gentleman, I'm here this evening representing my client, Mr. Kevin Smith. He is the owner of KCB Properties. He's here this evening with his wife. Um, they would like to put on, uh, a couple of additions to this existing house, maybe at Randlett Street. Want to put on a fourteen, like, twenty-four and a half of additions to the rear and a second story, uh, to the right-hand side, it's also going to serve as a cockpit. And it could be elevated addition. And the last one is a mudroom in the front of the house, five foot by ten foot mudroom. The property is of a special flood exit area. The, uh, existing base is, is going to be demolished and broken up and brought up to code for the, uh, for the flood area. Um, as far as the setbacks are concerned, we're probably not exceeding what, uh, what is existing today, but the house is a pretty existing non-conforming construction. Approximately on the left-hand side, six and a half feet off the property. The newest addition on the right is going to also be about six and a half feet.
So, you are expanding.
I'm sorry?
When you're much, you're expanding, you're going out twelve feet in your addition. You're bringing it within six feet. My question is this, you know, shed, the way these, the way this fence is drawn, this fence was put in, that's his neighbor's shed?
Yep. Mm-hmm. That's the neighbor's fence.
No, that's what I meant, that was my next question. It looked like it was the neighbor's fence. You put it there. I don't know why it did, but it did. Uh, but, what I see now is the shed that is not in this property.
Correct.
We're going to move that over like four feet so it is in this property?
Well, if you tell us, we have to.
I think it, so are you a little shed?
I'm getting rid of the shed. I'm going to get rid of the shed. The shed, it's all rotted and stuff, it's going to be gone.
All right. Is the neighbor here?
Yeah.
I believe so.
I think that's you.
The fence?
What's that?
You put that fence up?
Are you talking about on my side? Yes.
Nice neighbor, huh? Hands are right, there's a lot here. Now, is that the Davises? Do they own that? Where the copport is, do they own that? The one to the right? There's like a, there's a fence over there, and then there's like a small little lot there.
Yeah, they, uh.
I don't know if that's all theirs.
They have like a double lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And then where your garage is, if you look from the back, seven and a half feet. It looks like where your property line is, you do have a little small, I don't know, broken up fence to blow up.
It's, it's hedges. Probably going to take those out. I think the neighbor, that neighbor is also, I've talked to them, they're going to put up a fence too.
All right. So, that'll clean up the back too?
Yeah.
All right, we'll get rid of that. Those are the couple of things that, what I'm looking at, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, I'm saying, this is like, that was like that street we had, where everything was off four feet, remember? The guy's staircase was the neighbors.
I had a few of those in my life, I think.
Whole street, whole street. He, he wanted to build a brand new house, he said, stairs. I goes, those stairs are where your neighbors, the ones you own.
Yeah.
Have any questions to the applicant?
If any.
I think it's a pretty nice house to put it up. Let's go, Brian.
What are you going to do with the garage?
Uh, I was just going to leave it.
Storage?
Yeah, storage, kind of. I'm getting rid of the basement, so, yeah.
Is the asphalt staying all the way down? Is there asphalt down there?
Sorry. Is there asphalt? Yes, it's asphalt right now, yeah.
All the way to the garage?
All the way to the garage.
It is, behind that?
Uh, no, it goes straight all the way to the garage. Yeah. Yeah, it's a long drive, but.
Uh, no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any notes?
I have none.
Uh, yeah, sorry, yeah. It is a lot of asphalt. You've got a cop or something. You've got to get two or three cars off the street, though. It'd be nice to have it, I guess, if somebody, yeah, if you don't, because. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor. First call? You want to move beside me?
What's that?
We have to realize that the fence from our side of the property is, um, you know, not at our lot line. So, obviously, we're, we're not giving up our land, but we have no plans to move the fence. It was fine, so I'm looking at it, I'm going, wow.
Yes.
This guy's a good guy, so we got to pass him by.
So, um.
Name and address, what are they?
Timothy McElhulon, thirty-four Randlett Street, so I'm a direct of butter to them. Um, we are in favor, my wife and I are in favor of this. We think it's going to improve the neighborhood. Um, we think that this is what variances are intended for, um, to improve neighborhoods without any detriment to the neighborhood. The house, they're planning to build, uh, is in keeping with the neighborhood, their houses are similar size. We never have had, I've been there twenty-seven years, we've never had any flood issues, uh, there's no water table issue, um, where we are on the street with, with the height. So, I don't see any, any problems stemming from this development. I think it only improves the neighborhood, that we're in favor of it.
Thanks very much.
Can I suggest one thing? You have good neighbors coming in, you better track them. Somebody vote what adverse possession is.
No, I know, I know. And we actually sent a letter to the prior neighbors and said, we'll put you on notice that we're not giving up our land.
You're on the record now.
I have an attorney, believe it or not. I'll build you a new fence. As long as you're in the process.
Is there anyone else like speaking in favor? Second call? Third call? Call up how the hearing flows. I have a letter here from the DPW, April twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. Now, that's three thirty-eight, case number sixteen oh two four, review the above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided on the side? Opposed or undecided, first call, second call? Someone's in the house, third call, close. I think, I think you have a nice piece of property there, it's going to work really nice.